Hello and welcome. You're viewing the Citizens Journalist Podcast, Mesa County Compass, that brings you the news that you can use from a different point of view. I'm Ruth.
I'm Lisa.
And together we are Mesa County Compass. Our goal is to create an informed, current, active citizenry armed with facts. We will be covering what's new, what's new to you, what it means to you, what you can do about it, and provide you access to the decision makers when we can. Good afternoon. You're here with Mesa County Compass this afternoon. And we are interviewing a couple more of our school board candidates. We have Casey Cole, who is the contender, if we will. And we have Will Jones, who is the incumbent. So we're going to have a good exchange of information here and get to know these folks a little bit better.
Yeah.
Welcome, Casey and Will.
Welcome. Thanks for the invite.
And just for a quick update, Casey, would you give us a little bit about yourself and why you got into this? And then we'll go to Will to do the same thing, okay?
Great. Yeah, so hi, I'm Casey Cole. I'm gonna say hi to the camera. So I'm a mom. I have a spunky little three and a half year old. I'm also a former educator. I taught here in D-51 and up in Cedar Edge. And now I work for the private sector. I work for two local small businesses here in town. I run like logistics and operations and voicing, that kind of stuff, all the boring stuff behind the scenes. But that's what I do. And you know, my husband and I were thinking about what I was gonna do now that my daughter's coming, kinda going back into the school age, you know, that kind of area. And I was asked if I was gonna go back to teaching, what was I gonna do? And I just felt like maybe teaching wasn't the place there I was meant to go next. I thought, what else could I do? Could I go into administration? And then I really kinda started thinking, you know, I think maybe the school board is where I should go. And so about a year and a half ago, I really started researching what a school board member does. I really started going back to school board meetings, either watching them online or going in person, and trying to decide if this was something that I could do. And so I did a lot of research. I thought, oh, I think this would be a really good position for me in my life right now. I've got a lot of good experience, a lot of background information about our school, school district. And so I looked up when the next election was and where I lived. And I just happened to live in District D, and that happened to be up for election this fall. So I decided to go for it. So that's a little bit about me.
Okay, and Will?
Hi, I'm Will Jones. Been on the school board for almost four years now. I'm a high school football coach where I've been at Central for the last 15 years, overall, about 20 years. I mean, the chief operative, actually the chief academic guy for the Grand Valley Youth Football League, the executive director. I've been doing that for about 25 years, almost 30 years. Been in Grand Junction for a little over 32 years right now. I've been dealing with kids for a long, long time. I worked at the Griffith Center as a residential supervisor. Sat down with some people about four years ago that thought I'd be really good for kids and what I do with the community. And I thought they were crazy at first. And so I sat down, really thought about it, you know, and decided to run. And I was elected and just took off running. Been enjoying it since I've been here. And it's been a great four years and, you know, and looking forward to, you know, hopefully four more. But it's a, you know, it's a good thing for anybody that comes in.
Yeah, thank you.
And you both were really impressed with the pay, right?
Yeah, it was great. That was the deciding factor.
That was.
The deciding factor.
Oh, yes, you know, my goodness.
That was the deciding factor right there.
You know, you said, and they could increase your pay by twice as much.
I'm telling you.
You know what? Zero times two is zero. You know, we do double our pay.
Yeah, double your pay, we'll give you more. So this is just a kind of esoteric question. What do you think is the role of education?
In general.
Yeah, in general. So start with you, Casey.
Great. I think education is about making sure that all children have good knowledge, a good knowledge base. They learn how to read, they learn how to write, they know basic math. But then also, and you know, social studies, science, all of the academic.
Took social studies out.
No, 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 no. I was trying to say just like the base academic content, you know, just all of that well-rounded like mental knowledge, right? But I also think education is about getting to know your peers, getting to know the community around you, learning how to become a community member and a productive citizen of your community. So I think there's a lot of pieces that go into education and why it's important to us as a community and why I think all students should have access and opportunity to really high-quality education, where they're really getting good, solid education from high-quality teachers, high-quality resources and curriculum, and they get a really broad and deep understanding of the world around them.
Okay, what about you, Will?
Well, education, we use it everywhere. So it's something we use. I mean, it could be a life lesson. It could be your everyday life. It could be, you know, we use math every day. We use, you know, English every day, you know. As she said, social studies and history, you know, different places you've experienced around the world. How to become a man, how to become a woman, how to become a better adult, you know. It's just simple life lessons that you use for everything, you know, how to act, what's right, what's wrong, you know, your mental behaviors, your non-mental behaviors, just how to deal with anything in history. So education is really strong with that.
So in education, one thing I didn't hear either of you say specifically, and because I was a teacher too. What is the things that, what was the thing that they said to you was the primary reason that a society has education?
What did they tell me when I was going through education classes?
Why did this, why does a society have education? Because I know that there were two primary things that they told us when we started.
Yeah, for me, I'll just be completely honest with you. I don't know if I was told like two specific reasons in my college career. But for me, it really was making sure that all children had a way to move forward in their life and that all children had the same amount of opportunity to move forward in their life. You mentioned earlier in conversation that like the library is the great equalizer. And I think education is very much the same. It didn't matter if you, you know, worked really hard, like way back when education was first, you know, brought up, public education at the very least. Didn't matter if you worked out on a farm, you know, doing agriculture work, or if you worked, your family was part of the city, you still deserved the same type of education so that you could move forward in whatever way you wanted to grow as an adult. And we, as a society, really do benefit from that. We benefit from an educated society, people who can critically think and work together and understand common concepts, being able to read and communicate with one another and write, and all of those extra pieces. And you know, like Will said, you know, doing math is part of life. So it doesn't matter where you are. And I would agree that it is like the equalizer. And I think that's what Horace Mann originally said when he talked about public education and why it's so important to our community is that it really gives every child a step up to continue on in their life.
And Ruth, what do you think are the, what's the reason that we need people to be educated? Because you're a community member.
I'm a community member. I am not one that has that college education. I just had a high school education. But it, just to assimilate into the world, basically. If you don't have an education, it makes it very difficult to get along with your peers. It makes it very difficult to figure out the equations that you need for life.
Right. Well, I was just thinking, what you'd said before was, we want to have people that can live on their own.
Right.
And if you, if you can't, you aren't educated, and you can't support yourself, and you can't do skills that are necessary, you're probably not gonna be able to make it on your own. But ours also in sociology said, one of the big reasons, and I think when we discuss further, it'll come clear when you're saying community involvement. One of the major reasons they said we have schools designed the way they are is it's a babysitter for the parents. For eight hours a day during the school year, they don't have to worry about somebody's taking care of their kids. And it, you know, it may not be the right reason, but it is why parents, you know, when kids are off school, it's like, now I'm off school again? They just had so many days.
Because they didn't have that so much years and years and years ago, you were taught at home.
Yeah.
Well, I think one of the biggest things for me, as you said, you know, the reason that we think education is important is you've heard so many people say it, you know, a mind is a trouble thing to waste, you know. Or you heard somebody say, you wanna, you know, if you could see it, you can achieve it. You know, it's just like me as a football coach, you know, you have that kid that wants to be a starter. You know, they wants to work their way up to the starter, to the varsity, from the little leagues or anything. So they have to work for it. So anything that we do now, we have to work for it. And so we have to have that education for it. We have to clear our mind and know the do's and don'ts, the rights and wrongs, the hard work, determination, the blood, the sweat, the tears you have to put into it. So for me, that's one of the biggest things about it is, you know, you think about education, you, anything we do, we have to work for it. So if we want that diploma, we gotta work our butt off for it. We gotta study, we gotta take the test, we gotta come up with all the other things. And so it's the difference between, that's big for me, so.
Okay, Ruth, you get to be next. So I've got the goal of education. And what question do you have for them?
I'm sorry.
What question do you have for them?
Oh, what question do I have? Basically, get back on to what we really started here for, is I'm gonna ask both of you, what are the biggest challenges facing our district right now? And how do you plan to address them? And Will, we'll start with you this time.
Well, the biggest challenges we have right now is our declining enrollment. You know, we wanna make sure that, I mean, we understand that it's not due to anybody's fault. We're just not, you know, we wanna figure out, we wanna stop closing schools. We wanna figure out why, what the problem is, how do we, how do we stop doing that? It's sad that we, when we have to close a school. It's a last priority. But the reality is, it's happening everywhere around us, not just in Grand Junction. We've talked to fellow board members in Denver and, you know, places that had to shut down 11, 12 schools and 16 schools and elementaries. And it's a sad situation. So we have to figure out, you know, what to do to stop this problem, for one. How do we, how do we put a Band-Aid on it, if you will, and go from there? It was, it was a hard decision for all of our board this year. I mean, as easy as people may think it is, it's not. It's not something you sit around and say, okay, hey, we'll close this school. And, because it's a decision, either close the school or we let go of teachers. It's a catch-22. We don't wanna let go of anybody. Or can we save those teachers' jobs by putting them in another school somewhere and not worry? You know, so it's, it's a situation that's really super hard, but one we had to make. But our biggest challenge right now is trying to figure out how to get kids back into our district. We've done a great job of educating our schools. You know, we're in the top two right now for the first time in a long, long time. You know, our test scores are right above, right above the state average for a long, and that's all of our schools. So we wanna make sure we maintain that. Everybody asks, you know, what's the, what's the goal? Our goal is to maintain it, not just to achieve it, but we wanna be, we wanna maintain it, and we wanna get every school in that top two tiers of performance. So our biggest challenge would be that, and then our safety and security. It's making sure that our schools are safe and we're good. You know, we have, we don't have the unfortunate incidents that happened in Evergreen and Columbine or the other schools or anything around us. So we wanna make sure that every single school, when those parents drop their kids off at school, they know that their kids are 100% safe from anything that goes on there. And so for me, those, that I see, in my opinion, those are our two.
Casey?
I'm not gonna say much different. You know, it's, it's pretty clear that, you know, declining enrollment and that that goes directly into our budget. And our budget has always been something that has been very hard for our school board to, not, not to manage. I'm not saying that it's not manageable, but it's just something that has caused some issues along the way. Like, we can't go too far with our budget because we just are at a, at a cap, you know, with what we, what we get from the state and the federal and from our local spot. Like, working within those means has always been, has always been tough. And then add declining enrollment on top of that really does impact our budget even more. So yeah, I agree with what, you know, Will said. How do we keep our, our kids in D-51? How do we, you know, bring our community in to try to figure out, how do we address declining enrollment? If we don't wanna close schools, what are the next options for that?
And so what would you say are the next options? I mean, it's fine to say these are goals, but how? How would you do that?
Yeah, so I definitely think we probably could use a little-
Without any more money?
Without any more money. I hear you. No, don't worry. I really believe that our community wants to be involved. I think they just, you know, state, taxpayers, teachers, families, everyone just wants to be involved and understand. When I was sitting in the audience when, you know, our board was making the really hard decision of closing schools, I had the honor of being able to hear people talk about what was happening. And honestly, it just, everyone felt like it was such a shock and that we didn't know what was happening, we didn't know why it was happening. And this is not necessarily just, like, I'm not trying to like rag on anything, but I just feel like it was an opportunity for us to bring people in. And now we know, now we know what people want, so we can move forward. And, you know, try to create more committees or more listening sessions so that our community truly understands what's going on. I, I'm not going to say that putting a MLEV override is not out of the question. When I was sitting in the audience and they were discussing what the elementary declining committee talked about, MLO was on there. And when it was mentioned that we decided not to go from that, many people in the audience were like, well, why the heck not? You know, like, people were wanting to know why these decisions were made the way they were. So those, those are, those are like my goals and my steps. Like, I really believe that we need to start by listening and start bringing in our community just a little bit more. Going out into our community, hosting listening sessions. And I know the board does board coffees often. I just would like to see that expanded a little bit more. Because I think if we can just bring people in, we can get buy-in a little bit more. And I'm not saying we're just gonna sit around in a circle and like sing kumbaya or anything like that. That's not what I'm trying to say. But it really is about hosting those listening sessions, bringing people in, trying to explain really deeply so that our community understands as a whole. Because we're not out of the woods. I mean, we're still declining enrollment, right? And so we still might have to close more schools. I mean, it doesn't matter if I'm elected or Will is elected, we might have to close more schools.
I think there's a probability of that because statistics say that people are not having children.
Right.
And they're not, they're rather concentrating on themselves. And that we're going into that phase, we're gonna start losing more children because of that.
Absolutely.
So there is going to be declining enrollment. And I find, personally, I find that if the people don't engage until there's a crisis, you have to say, we're gonna close such and such school, then everybody goes into an uproar.
I agree.
Then you have to try to calm the waters.
Right.
So that's kind of where, you know, rather than getting out now and saying, we're gonna do this, they won't even pay any attention to you until you say, this is what we're going to do.
I think though, but I, but I think though, we've had the crisis, right? And I think people are paying a lot of attention. And when I say like my, my messages on Facebook are pretty full of families asking me what I would do differently and how, and I've asked them what they would like, they would have liked to see done differently. And really, they've just said they would like to have had more communication around it and that they really did feel like there wasn't enough communication. Now, I do know that from watching board meetings that there wasn't, there were attempts for communication and just like what you're saying, right? Everyone thought, it's not gonna be my school, you know? And that's what everybody thought, this is not gonna be my school.
Yeah, until there's a crisis.
Until there's a crisis, right? So I, I hear you. But I do think that the more we can just like try to bring people in and like go to schools, go to communities, even if they're not like on the chopping block, if that's what you want, if that's what we wanna say, just talking about the realities of where we are and just try, all we can do is try and come out. And if people wanna come out, they're, they're gonna come out. And if they're not gonna come out, they're not gonna come out. And all, all we can do, the only thing in our control is if we try and just try to get the word out there a little bit.
Okay, let's ask what Will has.
Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry.
No, you're good. No, and a lot of that, just to add on what, a lot of that is, you know, we can, we can try and talk to the community as long as we want to, but a lot of this is our legislature. And we gotta have, we gotta write our legislature and say, hey, we, we've got a wonderful lobbyist who goes out and fights for us and lets us know what we need. And we have to start there because our per pupil funding isn't fair. Our, when we're funded 174th to 178th, that, that's a problem, you know? And to me, I, the, what's, what's the price of education? Why do we have, I mean, no matter how many kids you have, we should get the same quality of education as anybody else. And it's not fair that you go to, you know, I understand the cost of living is higher in other places and all of that, but why does that have to have a price on education? Why does that, why does that have to factor? Because I live in Cherry Creek somewhere rather than Grand Junction? Or if I live in Clifton, rather than, what does that matter? You know, our kids deserve to be educated the same way, have the same upbringing, and that's what I feel we're lacking, you know? And it's sad to see when you go to other places and you see their funding, we're, we're way up here, and then we look down here and we're 174. But then our test scores are improving, our, our, our kids are graduating, our graduation rate's up to 83.7%. You know, those things, but we're sending them into a world where now they're gonna get even worse because now they're gonna go to high school, they're gonna go to college, but we're not gonna have that funding for them or, or scholarships available or whatever. So we have to figure out how to make it more equitable when it comes to the funding part of it as well. We do, you know, like I said, we started our listening problem. The problem with the closing schools was it started long before this board started. So back when, it was back in, I think it was 2017 when it should have been addressed, we kinda kicked it down the road. So it's been, it's been an issue that's been kinda shoving under the carpet, under the carpet, undercover until it's too late. And then it was too late, so it was like, okay, now we have to deal with it. So it doesn't matter who was in office, that problem still would've came up and hadn't been dealt with. But I, I think that as long as we stay engaged and attempt, and I understand our board meetings are either at five or six, but if you can just tune in and listen, because we, we talk about things every meeting. And every meeting, there's a small session about something, whether it be the progression of our schools, our financial stuff, the budget, no matter what, there's a small section in every meeting that comes out. And then really pay attention in our work sessions where we really dive into things and talk about things and have our presentations so everybody has a deeper understanding of it. And then if, you know, you don't wanna listen to it, shut it off. But I mean, just make an attempt to listen to it. You know, there's so many board meetings where we don't have anybody. But then, you know, if it's some kind of travesty, we're full, you know? And I, and I get it, I understand, I understand. But our problem is, we gotta figure out how to make every board meeting as important so our community listens to us as well, so it's, it's not at that rate. So if something were to happen again, well, we've been stringing you along, we've been telling you and keeping you informed the whole time. So that's-
So Casey, how would you, you know, because it always becomes that. We get that because we do a lot of different community things. And it's like city council will say, well, we post this, and you can come to the meetings, and you can come to the workshops, and you can come. But how many have you been to?
Me?
Yeah.
I've gone to a lot.
No, no, I'm talking about the city workshops.
Oh, the city workshops?
And the county, where they have, we have a meeting, we have a hearing. It's just so much that everybody says, you know, well, if the community just would engage. But the community works too, and the community has families, and they go to their football games, and they go to, how can you make it more engageable or something, something small? I know that, and I think when you're saying all these parents came out, well, it was the parents that were going to be affected by what was happening. It's not parents or grandparents or somebody like me. My kids are grown, so I am not gonna go and say, I'm gonna spend hours listening to why East Middle School needs to be closed because I'm not, you know, I don't have any kids in that. And it's not being cruel, it's just that there are other things going on.
Fact of life.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how do you get people to engage? Is there any way that you can get them so that they understand what's going on, feel more informed and engaged? You're saying they can join committees?
I'm not necessarily saying they could join committees. I think that's a really great start and something that we could do.
You could, but who is gonna come?
Right, I, I hear you. And so what, what my vision or my hope would be, I, I would like to go out into the community rather than having one central location for the community to come to us.
And that's what city council has just moved to. It's very smart.
And so I, like, I, when, I know I keep bringing this up, but when I was in the audience for the school closures, I did notice that there were a lot of families from scenic, and that's, there's nothing wrong with that. But they are very close in proximity to the main, where our five, our Harry Butler Boardroom is. And while I was waiting in line, I was waiting in line with some of the Clifton families and some of the Nisley families. And by that time, all of the seats had been taken, right? So they were outside or in the overflow room. So in my mind, it would have been really nice to be able to go to the different like schools, like as a community, not just the schools that are closing, but trying to go to some of these other central areas where people may not be able to wanna drive 20 minutes into town to go to a board meeting. And I think it's great that our board meetings are on live, like, on, are live. That's really wonderful and a really great way for people to access those. But I think people wanna be in person, like, they wanna, they want to hear you and be there. So that's what I mean by going out into the community. And I understand that is a huge time commitment. And I understand that there's, there's a lot of other pieces that are at play here. But when we're, we're talking about these really big crisis issues, like you're talking about, I think we deserve to go to those people. And I, I know in the past, some schools have said, no, we don't want you here because we're trying to do our own, we're, we're trying to mourn this on our own and we don't need you there. Like, I know that that did happen. But I'm thinking more proactively. I'm trying to get out a little bit earlier in different parts of our community.
And did you guys do any of that, or do you do any of that?
Well, the principal, we didn't do it as a board. We kinda did our coffees at different places. So we like, we do a board coffee, we do one in Clifton, or we'll do one in Fruta, we'll do one, you know, all the way around. So whether it's middle school, elementary school. But the principal and our, our, excuse me, our superintendent did a really good job of going to talk to those principals and their teachers and their community to let them know what's going on when they have their meetings. So it wasn't, the board didn't meet with them, but the committees met with them as far as the superintendent and his staff. They would go to the schools and talk to those teachers. So I know people thought the board didn't care, but when the super, we tasked the superintendent on, okay, hey, we need you to find out, you know, so we sent him. And so he did go to the separate schools and talk to those, the staff themselves. You know, especially with what happened in Fruta. We went out there to a couple different meetings in Fruta to talk about the situation and what was going on. And, you know, so I know that myself and Andrea and Angelo, and I think the whole board went in different, different parts, but we went a couple different times. So they're, they're talked to, but just not as, not as a community.
And did, were they well attended?
Yes, some of them were, some of them were and some of them weren't. So I mean, I know the meetings that with, you know, when you're meeting with staff was what was well.
No, because they wanna know what, it impacts them directly.
Exactly. Exactly. Yes, ma'am. Hundred percent.
Yeah. And when you were going through, I'm I'm just going back to your podcast you just did.
Oh, yeah.
And you said that you really were kind of praising the present board for things that they'd done. Like you said, grade school has a solid literacy and math curriculum now. And a good scope and sequence. And it feels more like a district, a school district rather than a district of schools. And that was something that this board currently just put that curriculum in. Because you said when you first started with different board, it was everybody was doing their own thing and and so it didn't have that. Consistency and cohesion that you would want. So that seemed to be good.
And middle. Well, I I'd like to clarify really fast if you don't mind. So part of, part of the science of reading curriculum that was adopted was also required by the state legislature. So we were required as a district to adopt a new science of reading curriculum.
And it was one that they had chosen.
Well, so they were, there were lots of different options from my understanding that a school district could choose from. And then so the curriculum resource team are the ones that went through and decided which one was gonna be the best. And Jackie Anderson, the curriculum resource, person who's in charge of that, I don't know her exact title. She's the one who's really worked hard to make our school a district of schools, not, or the, yeah, you know, a school district, not just. A district of schools. And I I do hear that from our teachers, that it does feel a little bit better and a little bit more cohesive. And we're not trading curriculum over and over and over again. And part of the reason we were trading curriculum over and over again was. Different research was coming out all of the, all the time. And then our state legislature finally went, no, we need to go with the science of reading. We're noticing some of these other things. So districts, you need to adopt a curriculum that's with the science of reading, or you may lose like read act funding. So to be fair, and I mean, I don't mean this in a disrespectful way or anything, but it didn't, it wouldn't have mattered who was on the board. Like that decision was going to have to be made regardless. And I think that Jackie has come into that position and has had a very clear vision. Of what she'd like curriculum to be. And so that's what I meant by that is I do, and I do think that's a great thing to have have happen, right? We do need our students to have a really good scope and sequence. They need to know from kindergarten to fifth grade, have a very similar curriculum so that they're not relearning. Things over and over again. That was one of my biggest issues as a teacher, as I was learning new curriculum and they were trying to learn new curriculum.
And it was. Complaint for a long time.
Yeah, it was a real, it was very frustrating. And so I do appreciate that. But the, the math started. The math curriculum started right before I left the Bridges curriculum. And I do appreciate that that has not been changed. It's just been updated. And that was, that was prior to this board. And then the science of reading. Was, was handed down by the state legislation. And I was part before that handed down, was handed down, I was part of. The math curriculum and we brought up even that, you know, this is coming down the pike. Why are we moving towards this other whole language? Part our reading curriculum, when we know that this is coming down from the state. So teachers were sounding the alarm way before any of this happened. So. I'm glad that we have somebody in the position that was, was recognizing like, hey, this is an issue and moving forward and then selecting. Really great, high quality teachers to select the curriculum.
And Will, do you agree with that? That that was how everything happened?
Yes or no? Yes or no? Yeah, no, there's, there's, there's some board involvement in it. I know it's, it's not just a simple. The way, the way everything comes out, as you know, the board has a responsibility with curriculum as well. So what happens is that. Jackie comes over and says, you know, hey, this is great. This is what we see. This is what you get. These are the choices. Then she has a little reading party or she invites some people over. We get the curriculum, we get to look at it, we look over and if we don't agree with it, then you can say, hey, no, I don't like this. Let's go do something better. Let's take this choice. But every board member got a copy of that. We looked at it, we took a look at it. And if it was something that we didn't approve of, then we went to the next curriculum. You know, we looked at cost, we looked at how it's gonna affect the budget. We looked at how students are gonna learn from it. If there's anything, you know, in math, science, history doesn't matter. If it's anything that the board didn't like about it, then we send it back to Jackie and said, okay, hey, about this A, B, C, and D. And her staff looked at it. You know, and if it was something that was approved at, the board approves it and then it goes out. Jackie does an amazing job, that whole team, you know, Jen Marsh and Jackie, they're, they're a great team together. They do a lot for us. But the board really looks it over and the board approves it. So if it doesn't get approved, yeah, it doesn't matter. What, the, the board has the final decision on the curriculum. Now, we don't teach it. The teachers teach it. And and then, and that's, 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 it's all part of a good teamwork thing. It's, it's great. So, you know, so the board take credit for it? Yeah, but should the teachers take credit for it? Yep. Do our students take credit for it? Yep. Do our parents? Yes. It's a team effort. So it's, 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 it's good that things are changing. Now, when we got here, our math and science score, they were, they were terrible four years ago. And I'm not saying that because Will Jones got, got elected, we jumped up. But we sat down, we dug into it, we looked at some things and we said, no, this, this, this is not right. This can't be happening. Our kids cannot be reading at this level or. They can't be writing at this level. They can't be understanding these things at this level. So we had some accountability. So we held the people accountable that needed to be. We held Dr. Hill accountable first, you know, and if he hadn't been there, we would have held Ms. Circle accountable. But I mean, Dr. Hill was accountable. We had him hold his principals and their staff accountable. So then things start coming along. Everybody start, you know. The teachers were doing a great job and there was some accountability going on there. So you have to have that piece because if you don't have accountability, then what do you have? You know, so the teachers, the admin, the, the staff, the psychologists, everybody got together. These kids are reading at a great level now. They're, they're having fun doing it. You know, we're, different policies that we've incorporated, the, the cell phone policy. That's a great one for us because people, some people don't like it. But I mean, we've had a lot of teachers come to us and say, thank you. Yeah, we really appreciate it, you know, because our kids, our, our kids are, our kids are reading now. We have time to look at them in their faces and study, you know, and. There's the occasional, hey, look up, you know, that we all did it. But I mean, now our teachers have time to focus on, and they're, they're getting that focus in class. The test scores are coming up because kids are taking time to look at it. We're not looking to see what time, what touch and soul is doing on TikTok. We're not having the silly TikTok challenges we had before. You know, where, you know, stuff got damaged and, and some kids saw this and so kids were being injured from TikTok challenges. We're not saying those things. We're getting a lot of thank yous. And so for us, I've been to a lot of schools where we talk to kids, especially at the high school level, where we sat in classes and the kids are like, hey, it's great. You know, and then you get the couple that say, well, I don't like it. Well, why? Well, because I don't know what's going on. And you know, you have the occasional parent that, hey, what if emergency comes along? That's how I kept hold my kid. Well, we understand that. But for the most part, we've gotten thank yous. So we know that technology has gotten better, the information got better and your test scores are, are better. So.
It's a win-win.
It is, it is.
Okay, Ruth, I've been hogging it. No, I'm a hogger. It's a bad thing.
Okay, now then we'll touch another subject. What would you do if faced with a budget shortfall? I'll start with you, Casey, this time.
But faced with a budget shortfall? You know, I think we've, we've seen it play out, having a budget shortfall, not knowing where money is coming from or if we're going to get that money. And really, I, I think we need to lean on Mel and her team at the CFO, her CFO team. The financial team is what I meant to say. I apologize. But you know, where. They are the experts in our budget more than anything. And so coming to them, saying, what do we need to do? How big is our shortfall? Is this something that we can use our reserves for to cover at least for now, until we can get some more information moving forward? If it's a shortfall that is like, we're on a cliff and we are, we're not gonna have, we're not gonna make payroll, we're not going to do. We're not gonna be able to keep a building like the lights on or, or whatever it is. You know, we are going to have to make a hard decision, whether that means we have to do a reduction in force, which means we have to remove teachers. Or positions from our school district so that we can not go bankrupt or have to. You know, not make payroll. But really, it's going to be relying on our financial team, but then. Making a decision and making sure that our community understands that decision and moving forward with how do we address the shortfall so it's not going, going to come back again. So if at the state, I was just talking to Mel yesterday that, you know, really worried about the averaging going down from five years to two years to even no years. And that's really going to impact our school district. So one, like Will said, how do we, you know, meet up with our legislators to try to come up with a more. Equitable per pupil funding for Mesa County because our kids do deserve it. But also, how do we go into our community to say like, hey, we're at a cliff? We don't wanna remove students or we don't wanna remove staff and we don't wanna remove schools. What can we as a community do together? Is an MLO an option? Is a bond an option? But at the end of the day, like, we might have to make hard decisions and reduction in force unfortunately is some, is one of those decisions that we may have to make. And it's gonna be a tumultuous decision. It's gonna be just as hard as making a decision of closing a school. Or, or whatever else is gonna be, it's gonna be a big issue. But ultimately, it's, it's our decision to make and. Leaning on Mel and her team of where we're gonna go and what we're gonna do next.
Okay, Will.
Well, unfortunately, I mean, I, I, we've been there. We've been there. When we first got on the board, we were right there. We were on the cliff. You know, our reserves were down to where they were, you know. Being, being one of the highest paid, you know, being the district is, is the biggest employer in Mesa County. We were right there and then we stepped up and what we did is we looked over all, all of our programs. We looked at everything. We looked at, everybody says admin, 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 admin. Well, we tasked Dr. Hill with, hey, look at your admin. Look, look at your admin positions. Let's see where we're at. See what we don't need. See, we, we haven't had an assistant super in many years. You know, something the district really needs, you know. But we, we haven't, we backfilled many positions. We just haven't filled it all. And then we've looked at there without hurting our programs that we need to cut. Make sure we don't cut any programs that affect education. So that's one of those things that it's very important to us. And so we've had to, you know, we've had to look at it when, and we stated, okay, we want reserves at. And it's eighteen percent or whatever it was, but we, that's what we want and our reserves are there. Now, we wanna do everything we can without having to touch those reserves because. If you start dipping into reserves, it's gone before you know it. Especially, especially trying to do the amount of teachers we have, the amount of admin we have, the amount of everybody, it goes in a heartbeat. And so if you're, you're one. Bad year away from having to go bankrupt. We just read the other day, there's a school district filing for bankruptcy right now because they've had to dip into the reserves. You know, and and that's something, that's, that's a sad thing to hear, especially for a school. So, but yeah, we've looked at, we looked at other options, everything we can do, whether it be a mill levy, whether it be going to our, our, our community and saying, hey, this is where we're at. You know, this is what we've done as a district. This is where we have, we've trimmed down. This is where we're at because we have to function. So the admin that are here are at this place. Unfortunately, you know, it affects raises and everything else with no money coming in. So we have to figure out ways to do that. And as a board, that's when we sat down and said, okay, hey, this is what we need to do. And we figured those out, you know, and then go to the community and say, this. Community, whether it be teachers or whoever, this is where we're at. This is the shortcut, but this is what the district's done. Can you guys meet us in the middle? So that just as long as there's open communication and we just don't do anything that doesn't affect your everyday programming without cutting programs here and there, whether it be nutrition, whether it be anything else. As a district, you have to do that.
So you were saying that we just need to rely on the CFO to make those determinations of where to make those cuts. Will saying that they get information from all of these sources and then the board makes the decisions on. Where can we cut and where can we not cut? Why would you think we would just wanna rely on the CFO?
It's not that I wanna rely on the CFO, but our CFO has all of the information, right? And she sees it every single day. That's what she lives and she breathes. And so it wouldn't be smart of us to not include her and figure out. Where she feels like we should, you know, make decisions or, you know, even bringing in the superintendent. It's not something that I think. That the board independently should make a decision. I do think we need to bring in our financial team and. Ask and wonder and try to figure out, much like, you know, what, what Will said, you know, like, where can we cut? What can we do? And the person who knows that the best honestly is, is our CFO and our financial team.
And do you include the CFO?
Yes. Yeah, we have, we have two two and ones. We have, you know, whether it be a two, two and one meeting or anything else. If we, anything we, any question we ask, anything goes through Mel. I mean, that, that, that financial team, twenty nine year award winners, you know. One of the best financial teams around, we can't ask for any better. So anything that has to do with our district, we, we call Mel in a heartbeat. Hey, what do you think about this? You know, but when it comes to. Staff reductions and things like that, that's when we task our superintendent and say, hey, where can you look for your admin? Let's look at here, you know, and then we go to Mel. Okay, Mel, if we have to cut. You know, if we have to do twenty nine FTEs, you know, where do we find that at? If, what, what school's over? What, where do we do this? That's when we start looking at individual schools and say, okay, hey, sorry, Central High School, you have, you're over twenty nine FTEs. Where can we, where can we cut that at? Where can we do? This is what we have to do unless we start, you know, getting the funding and we have to cut, you know, and that's what, that was the unfortunate part about, like I said, closing schools. Is you either, you either close the school or you lose jobs, you know, and then those teachers, you know, and a lot of people came to us and said, why are you closing our school? Okay, that's great, but. Now you pick what eighteen of your favorite teachers that you have now that we have to let go. You know, and, and tell us, tell us what's going, you know, what, I mean, but that's what it comes down to. And that's the sad part about it is your favorite, you know, Mr. Jones, your favorite math teacher. May not be your math teacher now because now we have to cut a program or what teachers we have to look at. So now Mr. Jones may be over at, you know. Such and so and so high school or middle school or elementary school because we just don't have the people for this school. So either, you know, it's, that's the, that's the ups and downs you have to weigh for everything. It's either, you know, unfortunate part of closing the school down or somebody losing their job, you know, so that's, that's the difficult.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be hard no matter what.
It is, it is, either way.
And especially, you know, we got this from Andrea on how the, the budget is and the local sources, of course. Are a hundred and twelve million. Is that, am I reading that right? A hundred and twelve million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, two, three hundred and seventy-four? So they were the smallest in that, except for the feds, who really weren't giving us that much either, six million.
Yeah, our funding, our funding comes from state. Yeah, that's, that's a bigger one.
And so who is responsible for making those? And you're saying you have to work with your representatives. And the problem comes in that we have fewer representatives over here on the western slope. To actually go in and fight those battles with the big population districts or who are saying, well, why would we give up anything to make you guys have more?
Right.
It, it doesn't seem to me like it's that much of a local issue. It, it comes down to, you know, what, what are the needs? What are the priorities? And I know you guys worked on a strategic plan, a long-term strategic plan. And you, was that not in place when you came in? What did you do differently?
No, we didn't have a strategic plan when we first got here. We, they were just first start talking about it and then we got here and we did a three-year strategic plan, which just ended. And then we just extended that one. So now we're doing a five-year. So at the end of our three years, it was great to have those upgrade. Like I said, every single meeting, we had some kind of. Some kind of update from somebody, whether it be education, whether it be the building, whether it be, you know, we had junction, junction was being built because that's when it first got approved. So we had a meeting every single, every work session, they would come forward and say, okay, this is where we're at. This is the junction, the ground was built today or the ground was tore up. You know, this, oh, they start putting this in. This is where I work for materials. This is where we're at for this. This is where we're at for construction. This is where we're at for, you know, so every. Record, we had a record everything. If we were in trouble, we'd know about it, you know, so and, and, and that was a part of strategic plans that you knew our graduation rate was good, you know, our test scores were coming up. So different parts of it. So that first year, three year, it was great. We exceeded our expectations. So then the five-year came. So now, you know, we're looking at, you know, five years from now, so I think it's two thousand twenty-nine or twenty-eight or something like that. We'll be to come back and say, okay, this is what happened. You know, whoever gets elected, that'll be gone in that first year or we'll be looking at a different, you know. But we're hoping that that twenty-five year, we exceed our expectations. You know, we want a hundred percent of this or ninety percent of this. We wanna be able to beat those records or beat those scores and. And exceed them, so.
Okay, okay. So I know that because both of us were teachers.
Yeah.
We do want to have, the teachers have, you know, maybe they don't feel like things are going as well as they can and there is a high burnout. I heard you say. You were kind of burned out too.
Yeah.
So how much of the burnout do you think is caused by the board and are there, are there things that could be done? For the teachers that would decrease the burnout and increase their job satisfaction because. I know at some points I thought, I'm giving you everything I can. If you give me more money, I can't give you any more of me because I'm, I'm there.
You've got a hundred percent of me giving me.
So what do you think for teachers are the biggest things that contribute to burnout? And how could those be addressed? And where, where does that addressing need to take place?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question. What I hear from a lot of teachers and from my own experience, some experiencing the start of some burnout, right? That was, it was just like the start. And from what I hear from teachers who are burned out, it's a lot of the. Behaviors in classrooms, like managing the ever increasing behaviors in classrooms and not having. A follow-through plan with the behavior. Oftentimes, what'll happen is a student will start disrupting a class. And then that student will leave, which is fine and great, and it does help bring things back. But then they'll often just like come back a couple of minutes later and then there's no follow-through after that. So. That child starts to learn that, oh.
There's no consequence.
I can act this way and then I just get one-on-one intention with an adult, which is really what they're seeking. More than anything during those, some of those disruptions. And then I just get to come back to class, right? There's nothing else. And so that's something that I've heard from teachers. Is like the number one thing. And I'm sure you know, you, you carry that weight that those students are carrying with you home. So that's the, that's a whole other part that. I'm not necessarily sure like a school board or a school district can alleviate because that's just who we are as people, like. We're generally empathetic people who care for our students. And when our students are going through a hard thing, like we carry that and that definitely. Is, is part of the burnout. But when that's compounded by like the disruptions in the classroom, I can't get through a lesson. I can't. Meet my goals. And then now I'm worried that I'm not going to, you know, pass my evaluation or I might be. You know, put on a teacher improvement plan or, you know, whatever that is. Those types of things start to weigh on you. And I think that. While the district policy or the school board policy on behavior is a really great start. I, I hear from teachers that once they go through policy, there's nothing else that they can do. And that's the part that they're struggling with. So I feel like as a board, we could come together and come, try, try to write some type of policy that gives teachers and admin and families. Some type of follow-through when it comes to behavior. And I know there's a behavior matrix and. I know her, I know her by her maiden name. She's been working really hard on that too. It's just about making sure that our teachers and our admin all are on that same page. And like, you know, like Will said, we direct our superintendent to follow through these kinds of things. And that's something a board can do. The other part that I see that burns teachers out is the massive amount of clerical work, whether it's grading. Or filling out reports or filling out report cards, parent-teacher conferences. All of those things are incredibly important. But it does start to weigh on our teachers when they don't have additional time to do the work. So. I mean, I remember running down, I'm sure you do too, running down the hallway, like eating a granola bar on your way to make copies, right? There's just not enough time to do the work. And so how do we as a board create policy that gives teachers more time? How do we work with our superintendent and our district leaders to make sure that our teachers do have the time to do this? And I know that comes with resources, right? And that's money. And we are in a tight budget. So how do we, right? Like, I get it. Like, it's all a big, it's a big. Spaghetti ball, right, of everything interconnected. But I think that's what I bring to the board is I do bring that understanding where. When leaders come to the board and explain some, a new protocol, I can ask those questions like, how is this going to increase our teacher workload? How is this going to affect our classrooms? Is this something additional that our teachers are going to have to do? How are we taking something off of their plate? Because I've had those questions as a teacher. And so while I don't necessarily have like the direct impact to teachers, right? That goes with the superintendent and then on down. I can ask those questions and I can get people wondering and. Understanding. And I do have a relationship with a lot of teachers around the district and they do feel really comfortable coming and talking to me about some of these issues. And then I can bring that to our board and our superintendent, not as an accusatory way, but just like, hey, this is what I'm hearing.
It's a fact.
It's a, yeah.
If you're grading two papers a day and you spend two, I mean, two papers a week.
Right.
And you've got thirty-five kids in class and you're spending two minutes apiece, you've got twenty-five hours of grading.
Yeah, absolutely.
Besides preparing.
Not even planning, you know, all of that kind of stuff.
Other stuff you do.
Yeah.
So it, it's true. And it's, and it's been that way. So do you feel like you don't understand? How, what the teachers are going through by not being in, in the classroom?
No, I, I, okay. So the way, the way I see it is, I mean, I'm not in a classroom, but I'm just as much as a teacher. I'm, I'm a football coach. And so I see these kids in and out of the classroom. I spend more time at the school than I do any other place, you know, whether it be their grades, you know, the kid, one of our kids are suffering. You know, we want our kids to be student athletes, but they're student first. So when I have a kid that's failing, we wanna find out what's going on, whether it be study halls, whether it's talking to the teachers. So, and then I'm also working with teachers and admin, you know, half those coaches are teachers or, you know, almost every kid, every coach on the field is a teacher. So I feel that, you know, a lot of the burnout, you know, comes from they don't feel supported. And I, and I hear this from a lot of teachers. I don't feel like my admin supports me. I don't. I go from frustrated about something, I. I go to the office and I feel like it falls on deaf ears. So what we've done is we've hold, we've held that area director and that that principal accountable. We go to our superintendent and say, hey, this is what I'm hearing from A, B, and C school. Can we get our area director to check in with them and see what goes on there? Um, let's find out what's happened. Let's, you know, we've had more surveys for them or, you know, more wellness checks, more different things that we've tried to, you know, our in-service days.
More paperwork for you. Because that's what it ends up being.
Right, right. Well, whether it be our our planning days or our teacher planning days, our in-service days and all those things. Anytime something new is proposed to us, we look at it and say, how's it affect the teachers? And, you know, Jen Marsh is great about it. She comes to us, she talks to us, she sees what the teachers are going through. So how's it gonna affect them? How's that create more work for them? How's it lessen their game plans? So anything that we approve, you know, on the calendar, we wanted to make sure that it's easier for the teachers. We've also made it, you know, so our 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 behavior, our behaviors are being accounted for. They're, we're holding kids accountable. You know, um, our expulsion rates are high, you know, but they're for aggressive behaviors, you know, and little things like that. Um, we've we've gone and we're sticking with those. And then even our expulsion rates, if a kid's expelled, he still gets his education. There's a class he's gotta take. He still goes to school. So we're not just telling you, hey, take a week off of school, go home, stay there. You know, but even when you're expelled, you gotta go to expulsion school and get the same lesson that you would have got when you're sitting in class.
But you just can't be in that environment.
You can't be in the environment. Yes, ma'am. Um, your IAPs, your five oh fours, we're making sure those are being followed and we're being more direct with them. Um, you know, is everybody on a five oh four? Maybe this kid has a problem. He's acting out because he doesn't understand. So let's figure that out. We're getting those groups together. We're getting those psych, the psychologists, the counselors and with the kid, and we're figuring it out with the parents. You know, maybe he just needs to be this, or maybe he needs this tool to understand or read or write or learn or whatever. So all those things that we're trying to take care of on a behavior level, you know, we're trying to help our teachers out. But but the biggest thing for us is that we listen. We're always available, whether it be through email, whether it be through a text. You can always call or text any one of us or send us, send us a letter, you know, hey, I'm frustrated. This is what's going on my school. I'm not feeling like I'm getting any help. You know, and then as a board member, I step up and say, okay, hey, or even a parent. You know, hey, I'm seeing this in class. I'm frustrated. You know, have you talked to the teacher? Well, no. Okay, let's talk to the teacher first. Are you getting results? Nope. Okay, let's go to the area director. You know, or sending email that includes the teacher, the area director and the principal. And if you're not getting stuff there, then come to me. And then I'll go to Dr. Hill and say, okay, hey, Mr. Jones has came to me and he said A, B, C, and D are happening. He's talked to these, these people. This is what's going on. Let's see what we can do to get some help out there. So now if you have to get them involved on a level, then we do. But we're always listening. We're always really out there.
Now, what would you add more different? I mean, you, how how could you where I look at it and say, what could we cut that actually helps a teacher in terms of what forms don't they need to fill out? What don't they need to do to achieve the same thing? Because it is, you know, you the people say they only teach six months a year. Well, because you're working twelve hours or fourteen hours a day. Because I know when I taught high school, I was up at four-thirty working on lesson plans. I went in, you had to be there at seven, you're there till four and you have to be involved. We did, I started teen court when I was there. Had five different preps a day and thirty-five kids, you know, between thirty and thirty-five kids in a class. And because this is, I thought, perfect for all teachers. Okay, this is, Jesus took his disciples up to the mountain and gathered them around him. He taught them, saying, blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of God. Blessed are the meek. Blessed are they that mourn. Blessed are the merciful. Blessed are they that thirst for justice. Blessed are you when you are persecuted. Blessed are you when you suffer. Be glad and rejoice, for your reward is great in heaven. And James said, are we supposed to know this? And Simon Peter said, will there be a test on this? And Philip said, I don't have any paper. And Bartholomew said, do we have to spell it correctly? And Mark said, do we have to hand this in? And John said, the other disciples didn't have to learn this. And Matthew said, may I go to the bathroom? Then one of the Pharisees who was present asked to see Jesus's lesson plan and inquired of Jesus, where are your learning and assessment objections? What range of teaching strategies did you draw from? Did you provide a differentiated provision? Can I see a cross-section of the pupil's work? And Jesus wept.
I mean, it that. Feel that in my core.
That is, that's what what they're dealing with. And I think that that is a lot of, you know, that we don't want to say it's about kids' learning. But I understand sometimes from a union perspective that what they're saying is the kids can't learn if the teachers can't teach.
Exactly.
And so you're wanting to make it better for teachers so that they can teach the kids. And you've got that interaction and you feel like there's a disconnect
Right.
somewhere.
Yeah.
And you don't, and everybody has an idea of how to fix it.
Right.
But it seems like many times when they say we need more money and the average family of four in Grand Junction makes sixty-six thousand dollars a year. So you're saying they're saying, I'm sorry, you know, we don't have any more money to give.
Right.
And we don't have any more time to give. We're just like you and you're just whining. Basically.
I mean, I feel that, like I, I, I understand. I know exactly what you're saying. Um, and it is, and it is, you know, you're kind of stuck within a rock and a hard place, right? You know, like we do need um, more resources and more money to alleviate everything that you just read, right? Um, but then on the same hand, exactly what you said, I mean, we have a fairly like low average salary and people are, um, you know, just making, making buy. And um, like I'm in that boat, you know, like, I mean, I'm blessed to have like a good, a good like family dynamic and things like that where I'm able to stay home. But I recognize that there are families out there. So when we go and ask our community for more resources or anything like that, I think we have to be very clear about what those resources may or may not be, um, or will be and will not be. That's the other part like this will not go to this. Um, and and being clear and honest about those kinds of things. But also trying to figure out ways that we can alleviate some of these things without additional resources. Are there are there resources within our current um, budget or people within our current budget that may be able to take on um, some of the, some of these things? What I hear from teachers is it just feels a little inequitable, like um, I can't get a hold of so-and-so to come help me with a behavior. And then another teacher and admin is like, well, I just call them up and they show up, right? And so there's a little bit of an imbalance as to who's going where and why and how often and who actually gets to um like get resources. Um, and I'm not saying that um, that's like a board problem or anything like that, but just it it's just what I hear is that there's seems to be a little bit of inequity. And we as board members just have to listen and hear that and always bring it up, like Will said, you know, like bringing it up to our superintendent.
Yeah, holding people accountable.
Holding people accountable, bringing that up and saying like, hey, this is what I'm hearing from X principal. Can you give me really good, solid reasons as to if this is happening or not? And can we meet with this principal and figure, figure out what's going on? Um, and so it's not necessarily that I would do anything like different, I guess you could say. I think um, what is, what's going on has, we're on the right track. Um, but it it does, it does feel like we're in like a rock and a hard place where there's not much um, that we as a board can do other than trying to keep people accountable and going to our community and asking for additional resources to help our teachers out.
Well, and I think we've started to do a lot of that as well as, you know, just, just, just doing the wellness checks with the teachers. You know, the the mid-season check-ins, how are you guys doing? What do you need? What are you seeing? What are your problems you're having? The constant business we have at the school, whether it be, you know, the your area director who's reaching right out to you, so you have direct access to him. You know, what's, what's going on? What's, what are our issues? Um, you know, just, just, just the, your end of the season, your, your interviews process when you're talking to our teachers, you know, a lot of our principals weren't doing that. So then we've tasked them and said, okay, these things need to change. You need to be checking in with your, with your student, your, your teachers or your directors or your admin or your upper admin. So I think we started, are we there? Hundred percent? No. Are we getting, getting better? Yes. You know, we're always gonna have issues. And I don't think, you know, I, I wish we could pay, no matter how much money we pay somebody, you're still gonna have that workload. So we just need to figure out whether we're gonna be whether, you know, how do we do it? Whether it be, you know, having a pair. If you, if you have a pair that's available that could be help you out or a pair in another department that might be able to step in and help you out. So just those different things to help somebody out without having to try and throw money at it. You know, because it doesn't matter. I said, I could be the highest-paid teacher in the world. I'm still gonna have the same workload that I had when I was a fifty-thousand-dollar teacher. You know, so I, I think that we're starting to get there. We're not there yet. You know, do we want our teachers to be very happy? Yep. Because like you said, happy teachers get good results. You know, those kids want to be in class. They're learning. They're having fun. They can't wait to get up in the morning and go see that teacher, you know. Um, but uh, you know, we, we do have a lot of, we do have a ways to go.
Well, and I think I'm gonna put some of it back on the teachers, I mean, on, on the parents and the students. Because they have so much, I, I know when I started teaching, they said they have an attention span that's equivalent to Sesame Street.
Yep.
Yeah.
But now it's equivalent to TikTok because you've got, your reels are a minute and a half. And they don't understand that there's a difference between entertainment and education. And sometimes, not everything is fun. Not everything you do in life is fun.
Looked all the, all the challenges. I mean, I, I take the prime example, there was a TikTok challenge where the kids thought it'd be cool to put cinnamon up their nose and all that stuff. And how many kids got sick from that? And then the ones where they destroyed property, you know, one of them was cool to destroy a bathroom. So many kids saw that on TikTok and they're all gonna try that. And so unfortunately, District Fifty-One was accountable to that, you know, kids saw it on TikTok, they went in, they destroyed property and thought that was the coolest thing in the world, not understanding the circumstances of that, just, just that one-minute TikTok now costs somebody thousands of dollars because you gotta, you know, repair the, the thing. You gotta repair the hole in the wall. You know, you tear, you've torn up cement or whatever, you know, or somebody's gone to the hospital and, and I almost died because it's, you know, it's in their systems. So the little things that the kids saw, you know, there's a lot of funny stuff on TikTok. My love, my wife lives by TikTok, loves it. You know, but there's been some great stuff on there, but some of the stuff the kids saw, you know, how impersonal they were. You know, so it's, 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 it's a
Difference between kids' brains and adult brains.
Yeah. And if I could just take one minute to go kind of back to workload, I also think something I hear from teachers a lot is inequity of workload. Um, so when you have a school, um, like the read plans, do you know what we, we don't know? So read plans, um, it's, it's required by Colorado. So if a child is reading below a certain grade level, they have to be put on something called a read plan. It's different than an IAP or a five oh four. It's just for um, reading essentially. Um, and it comes with a lot of paperwork. Um, and you know, our schools that are generally um, in like title schools or low-income schools, they often have a very high rate of read plans. And so those teachers tend to have a much higher workload than um, a peer that's not in that same um, kind of school system. So that inequity of workload also leads out to burn, leads to burnout too. Um, and I won't say that I have necessarily a solution to that, but at least having that like honest understanding that, you know, like when you have um, like the school that I taught in Fruitvale, I was looking at some of their data the other day. Um, and they have like seventy-eight percent of their kindergarteners coming in reading well below grade level, so needing a read plan. And um, at the end of the year, they only had three percent, which is huge growth, right? That's, that's huge. And then when I was looking at some other schools, they started out with three percent on a read plan and ended with like zero percent. But it's much different to go from seventy-eight percent of your students really reading a lot, well below grade level to ninety-seven percent of your kids reading on grade level. That's a huge jump and that's a lot of work. Um.
I think a lot of that, a lot of that is attributed to the teacher though too as well. I mean, you can't really, when you come in to be a teacher, you can't say, I want all, I want twenty-nine perfect students. You know, for, for me, the best thing in the world for me as a coach for football is to take, you know, I tell my freshmen all the time, I want to play varsity, I want to play varsity, I want to play varsity. And the biggest, biggest thing for me from football is watching one of my freshman kid play varsity game. Because he's worked his butt off for it. He's, he's learned a lot. And as a teacher, you can't, we can't all have perfect students. We all can't, we're, we're know we're gonna struggle somewhere. You know, so being a teacher, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna get a workload from somewhere, you know, so and and it's great that, you know, that they started at seventy-eight percent. It was terrible, but then they ended at three percent. That teacher put a lot of work into that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And so that teacher worked, like she had, or he or she had an enormous workload and still closed that gap really well. So that's a phenomenal teacher. And so when another teacher in the same school district is not having that same phenomenal workshop or workload, um, that feels inequitable and that leads to burnout. And so yes, as teachers, like, of course, we're like, yeah, we can't choose who we're gonna get. That's not what I'm saying at all, like, because that's just where we are in life. You never know who you're gonna get in your classroom. But recognizing the disparity, um, and teachers are understanding that we as leaders and board understand that inequity and are, are trying our best to alleviate that inequity is really important. And I think that means a lot to our teachers. Um, so I, I just wanted to bring that up in, in terms of workload and burnout because it really does, it really does impact um, a lot. And it does go back to what I said about the inequity of trying to get a hold of someone. Um, a lot of times our, our low-income schools, what if, from what I've heard is just they don't get the same support. And, you know, it's, it's frustrating. Um, and, you know, like, I, I just hear that from them and I can't verify whether that's true or not, because I honestly couldn't get a hold of the guy that I was supposed to try to get a hold of. Um, so I can't verify it, but it was just, it was so heartbreaking to hear from multiple teachers and multiple administration that that's, that was their current reality.
And so I'm just asking a question. So you're thinking that the board doesn't hear that?
No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying.
I mean, it's, it's gotta be there. Not, that's not happening. So what is the way that you get that to happen?
And it doesn't fall on deaf ears. I mean, it's if, if, if I'm, if I'm a teacher and I'm not, I'm not getting the, the support I need, then yeah, like I said, it's, it's an email away. Hey, uh, this is Will Jones over at North Elementary School, you know, I'm having these issues. I've tried to talk to my, my principal. I'm not feeling supported. You know, what can I do for help? Okay, then we email you back, you know. So if we, we hear as much, we answer as much as, you know, there's five of us on the board. And I don't care how many employees we have, we answer everyone as possible. Um, probably if not every single one of us, somebody will answer somebody. So as long as we're hearing these things, you're, we're, you know, we're gonna report back, hey, did you ever take care of that problem over at North, North Elementary School? Oh, okay, cool, great. Well, you know, they, they, a lot of times they can't go into detail, especially if it's a behavior-type issue. You know, but they can say, yes, I've talked to that parent. Okay, great. You know, then later on, we'll email the parent, hey, or the teacher. Hey, Mr. Jones, how you doing? You know, uh, our board member said they, or our principal said they got a hold of you. Everything, cool, keep us posted. You know, so it's always, it's always a phone, you know, it's, it's, I'm not gonna say it doesn't happen in schools because I'm sure it does. You know, but um the board is always a phone call away or phone call, email, text, it doesn't matter. We're accessible.
But I think that's the disconnect because what I hear from teachers and principals is that even though they are a phone call or email away, a lot of those phone calls and emails go unanswered.
Well, I think you just can't have, all five of us can't answer the board, the same one, so.
Well, they don't get answered at all. So that's, that's just where, that's where, that's the information that I'm getting. And I, I like hearing from you, Will, that you feel like that's not happening because I don't, I can't verify. I can't go in and look at your emails. I mean, I guess I could, Cora, request them, but I'm not going to. But you know, like.
Do it, do it.
Um, no, I'm just joking. But you know, like, I, I, I just feel like that's, that's what I'm hearing. And if anything, that's the perception that I'm hearing. And um, like, and that's just, I, I don't want any teacher to feel that, any principal, any family to feel like I have tried, I have tried and emailed, I've invited people in, I've done all of these things and no one shows up. And I and I, and it's not like just one person telling me. It's, it's a lot of people that are telling me. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Thinking it's coming from. And I could be wrong. That people feel like if they say something is wrong, they will say, what are you doing wrong? And they don't have the courage to know that maybe the problem isn't lying within the teacher. And so they are complaining, but they're complaining amongst themselves instead of going to someone and trusting that, because they'll think, well, if I, if I say something to them, then the, the board is gonna say, well, this teacher told me. And there's gonna be a repercussion to the teacher for saying that.
Yeah.
And so I, I, I don't know that it's necessarily that they, it's maybe a fear-based thing that.
I think a lot of it was, a lot of it was, you know, in past, I would say leadership is, is at the, it starts at the top, you know, and, and and like I said, Dr. Hill's done a great job of replacing some leaderships in some different, different schools. You know, one of our most problem schools is right at the top two right now. You know, so and it's all due to the leadership in his team. So it depends on where you start at, you know, it's, if you feel you can't be supported, if you feel you're gonna be um, was it punished because you said something, you know, then, then that's, you know, I can understand that. But since the change of leadership in so many places, we've gotten more positive results and negative results, so.
And maybe just sitting down with the board member and saying, you know, this is my fear and just being honest with him and saying, I'm afraid if I say something, that this will happen in my school.
Yeah, because a lot of it is, we have a lot of people that go from A to Z. What I mean by that is they come directly to us.
Right.
You know, and then we have to, you know, we have to, okay, well, did you, let me back you up. Did you, did you go talk to? You know, if it's an admin problem, if you talk to your admin first. Well, no, I really don't. Okay, well, you gotta start there because I can't, I can't step in and be superman and say, oh, the day for your problem when you haven't gone through. And, you know, now, if you've done that, if you've gone and talked to him and you have, you know, trail, I've talked to this person, you know, I've talked to this person, then we go and say, okay, Dr. Hill, this is the issue. You know, Mr. Jones came to me and said he had a problem with such and so and so. You know, they, they talked it out. There's, it's not getting any better. Can you please step in and see what we can do about it? You know, and that's when he's, and he's been really good about that, you know, with, he's seen everywhere. We've, we've heard that he is probably the most seen superintendent we've had in years. You know, he's everything, you know, so he, you know, all the little PBLs. he, you know, all the little PBLs, all the little sporting events, the read-a-thons, you know, if I'm there, he's there, you know, so. You know, and it's, we enjoy doing that stuff, but I mean, he's, he's seen and he's not obtainable. So I'm, I'm sure people call his office without going. You know, so it's, it's, it's being seen and being out there now that's, it's making it a little better for us, you know, and like you said, they're always gonna feel like they're overworked and I get it. But we just have to find, we, we have to come to a solution to figure out, you know, where they're at B, utilizing what we have in the school, you know, or, or whatever, so.
You can, you can apply and try to get more money and see what you can do.
We can, and as long as we can, as long as we have it, they'll get it. We, we believe teachers need it, we do. There's no, no denying it.
And now I'm gonna hit one controversial thing unless Ruth.
Ruth is like, I'm loving these conversations. She's like, this is the easiest interview. I just sit here and listen.
No, I feel bad. The last thing is, you know, on the union. And honestly, I looked at some stuff, I was not a union member. And I have specific reasons for not being union members. And it was not, I, I just one question that how much the union spends in different things. And because you can't get the exact numbers of, you know, what dues are paid. But they gave a, a number of a teacher paying union dues, it's one thousand fifty-seven dollars a year. That comes out of your budget. And a smaller percentage stays at the MVEA or Uniserv. And then most of it, it was like six hundred and eighty-eight went to the state. And then a percentage, two hundred and four went to the NEA. But I'm looking at it and saying, they said only seven percent of that money actually went to negotiating for teachers for their benefit. So I'm like, a lot of it, especially at the CEA, went fifty-nine percent to salaries. And I'm like, look, you know, I don't wanna pay for somebody else's salary to be up there. So I, I question if the MVEA just thinks that the school board or the school would take advantage of the teachers if there was no union. Or if it was just an association of teachers that were together for their own benefit and not and getting rid of all the dues and saying, you know, we're here to try to get the best working conditions and the best salary and, you know, the resources that we need. And all the rest just goes away. What do you think about that? I mean, what, it, it, because it becomes contentious. And a lot of people, I, like mine were, I don't want you to be involved in all the politics that you're in. I don't want you to be spending money trying to make these legislators at the national level do what you want them to do. When that isn't what's affecting teachers down here at the local level.
Yeah, plus the fact that a thousand dollars a month would look pretty good in your pocket. I'm sorry, a year, look pretty good in your pocket, I'm not month, I'm sorry.
But I mean, if you're only getting a two thousand dollar raise and you've spent a thousand dollars for the union, that doesn't seem to me like it is benefiting a teacher. When they're, and I know that the only reason, cause my friends were union leaders. And they said, you know, well, you get the protection of the attorney, but there are groups that are like nineteen dollars a month that you get the protection of an attorney. So I, I guess where I struggle is why, why did we need the union and why would you support what their negotiated contract is? Why not just have the teachers negotiate as a group for themselves? And just say, this is, this is really what we, you know, cause everybody knows you want more money.
Right.
I mean, that's, everybody wants a raise.
Absolutely.
So why do we need that? Everybody knows that the more kids you have, the less attention you can give to somebody. And so to me, it's like, why?
I mean, I guess that's, that's a question for the teachers who belong to the association.
But you belong to the association.
I did, yeah. And I, I'll be honest, I went to the state level and the national level quite a few times. And the amount of work that those staff members do is phenomenal. I mean, CEA was a really big contributing force to getting the budget stabilization factor removed. I mean, CEA worked on that for years. And I personally watched a lot of that work. And I, I, I really think that, you know, people deserve to get paid. And you know, like, I, I'm more happy to hear that it's fifty-nine percent are going to salaries. Like, that's wonderful to me. Like, that's more than half of my dues going to pay someone to work on education. And if, maybe if I don't agree with it necessarily all of the time, then, you know, like.
It was huge salaries. It was like the NEA president gets five hundred, you know, five hundred thousand.
You have to remember that that's all, that's the entire nation, all of those teachers combined going to the, to that, to that. And I'm not gonna say what someone's value is, that's not in my, that's not in my purview of what that person's value is. Obviously, you know, NEA and the, oh my gosh, the word is RA. I forget, I forget the words, but anyway, delegate assembly is what it's called. If they are believing that that person is valued at that much, like that's the deciding body. And I'm not part of that deciding body right now. And, and I wasn't when I was a union member, association member. But I did work very closely with the people who work really hard. And I appreciate that that salary, I, I understand your concern that the salaries are so high, especially when we think about the salaries that we have here in Mesa County. Like, I, I hear you on that one.
Well, they said it was four to one for the state, how much the president gets paid at the CEA. Four times as much as the highest paid teacher.
Right. And those are, those are questions that, you know, I would, I would bring to like delegates at delegate assembly and to them, like, those are fair questions. Like, I, I feel like that's totally fair to critique that in wonder and say like, why, where do you see the value in this? Like, why do you feel like the president needs to be paid X amount of money? Because these are my, my hard earned dollars that I'm paying, teachers are paying. So where is the value in that? And that's a question for the teachers that are part of that, of, of that group. So yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to say what the, the teachers or the educators think that value is. That's not, that's not my decision currently at the moment. But what I can say is when I was part of the association, I did see a lot of really hard work. And, you know, being part of the budget stabilization factor being removed, I mean, CEA really was a big, big factor in that. I went to like four lobby days where I went and I talked to our legislators trying to remove that budget stabilization factor. And then recently, when our federal government withheld some title funds, CEA and CASB came together to, to work on the federal government. So I mean, there's power there that people are working towards educational things that are really important, like getting that money back is so important. I mean, as we talked earlier, that our budget, we don't have anywhere to lose. So getting that money back is so important.
I guess it was what, why they were not giving you the federal money because of what they said, if, if you're doing this, then we're not supporting that. That was more political than it was.
Right. But what I'm, what I'm saying is CEA and CASB, both together, the Colorado Association of School Boards came together and realized that this money is so important to our school districts. And so they joined forces and worked really, really hard to try to get that money back, whether it's political or not. But I, I wanna finish the question really fast. You know, when, if the board wants to give at teachers and educators whatever they ask for without paying the dues or whatever. You know, I, I think that comes from building trust and proving to the teachers that we will do these kinds of things. If you ask, we will do, right? And I, I, I feel like, just to be completely honest, that hasn't happened a lot. I know that recently that, or in the past couple of years, there's been a lot of increases in pay, which I know teachers are very thankful for. But even just those most recent negotiations, asking for, you know, the behavior language or the class size language, a lot of the answer being at the, being in the audience was no, and no other reason given. And what happened behind closed doors, I don't know. I'm just a community member, right? But it didn't feel very like involved. So if you were to ask me, would the board, if, if teachers gave up their association status and stopped paying dues, would the board and the negotiations team just give and collaborate? I don't know, because there's, there, there have been a last couple of years where that hasn't necessarily happened. And like I said, I'm not trying to like lay blame. That's not what I'm, what I'm trying to say. But it, from a community perspective, being in that room, that's, that's, that was the impression that I got as a community member.
And what, what's your perception of what happened?
This year, this year was really the first year we really had a problem when going to impasse. And it was, it was simply because of everything that the union wanted was brought up at the last minute. It wasn't brought up in time before. You can't just show up, I mean, I can't show up to buy a house and all of a sudden be like, you know, the day of signing and be like, oh yeah, and I want A, B, C, and D. They're gonna tell you to go fly a kite, you know, they're gonna tell you whatever. So what happened was it came up at the last minute and the board was like, this wasn't discussed. This is wasn't, this wasn't part of your, when you come into negotiations, you get two things you wanna speak on. And neither one of those were the two things. And then it was like the time for, get ready for negotiations start. And it was, oh yeah, we wanna add this, this, and this. Well, the board was like, well, this wasn't discussed, so we're not ready for that. So then it went to impasse. And then we talked in impasse. And everybody agreed on, you know, it would be language or whatever. Everybody says, you know, that, that the board doesn't like the union, no, that's not true. You know, we, we've been, we were at the table for the first year. We sat down, there were two board members that sat there. And the whole backstory is we went down, we sat down and we had a great discussion. And they came forward and said, hey, this is what we wanna do for our teachers for special, for special needs. And we said, okay, great, we want a day. Well, you only want one day? And then we sat down as a board and discussed, okay, well, it's not, they, they're doing a good thing and they want this for something else. Let's give them two days. So we came back and said, oh, hey, you guys want one, we're gonna give you two. And everything was great. We thought we did a great thing. And so after the language came out, things got messed up, it got misconstrued, that got taken away and got put into something else different. So the whole wording was all wrong. So then we sat down as a board and said, okay, hey, we will never do that again. Let's look at, let's look at moving forward, having somebody there who does negotiations, who understands it. Well, our lawyer, our in-house lawyer, her company had done negotiations for the, for the district for a long time before. So we said, okay, we'll just go back to them and let them take care of it. So, and, and even though the lawyers are there, the board is still aware of every decision that's made because it comes out. She calls us one by one, this is what they're doing, where you, you know, whatever, we talk about it and we agree on it as a board. So anything that's gone, no matter who's there, the board still has a decision on it. We just don't sit at the table. So the next year, we went back to the president at the time and said, hey, we're gonna have our lawyer, who's part of this company, take care of it. She's gonna sit down, she's gonna negotiate for us, we're still gonna be part of it, no problem. You know, two years came about, everything was great. Everything that was brought up, we had a great discussion, everybody got, you know, good raises. We did everything that was, came about, you know, and this year was the first problem. So when this year came, we're not coming back. Now it's, oh, the board hates, the board hates us. You guys wanna get rid of the union. None of that was ever said by the board. You know, we appreciate our teachers, as we know, we don't function without our teachers. So, and everything the teachers want, we understand. But a lot of times you just can't bring something up last minute and think it's gonna be okay. You can't bring language up at the last minute. So that's what happened. We think that, you know, we, we think there's a need for, you know, for everybody to get along, you know, when I use this as an example. You know, I'm a big Raiders fan and a lot of people are Broncos fans. When you have two powerful teams that are just here, everybody wants to be on top. But when you're not willing to budge or talk about it, neither one of you can get any ground. You know, so you, and now I think with the change of, you know, of, of, of leadership in the union, Dan Worth right now is the, is the, the union president. He's had great conversations, he's met with the board, he's talking to us, there's willingness to have that conversation. I think conversation piece, that communication piece will be a lot better from here on out. So by the time you get to negotiations again, then there's room to sit down and talk. But when you have people that cancel meetings and don't show up for meetings or anything else, then there's a problem, you know, and that was happening on top. You know, hey, we're gonna schedule a meeting at such and so, so time, you just wouldn't show up. You know, so that tells the board that either you're not interested or you don't care what we have to say. And then it's, okay, well, the board doesn't care about us. So every single one of us on that board know that our teachers are important. We want what's best because at the end of the day, we both have the same common thing in mind and that's the education of our students. So we're, we both want that common ground. We know our teachers are gonna be happy that they'll teach our kids. And we know the board, they're leaving the school in great hands with our teachers and admin. So I think until we, until we get that communication built up and that trust built up, that everybody's gonna do what they say they're gonna do and show up for meetings and communicate and be transparent about things, then you're always gonna have butt heads.
I'm curious, Will, and you might have more information than I do. I, I had just talked to some people who were on the committees for the language that was brought up. And they said, they had mentioned that the language had been brought up multiple times.
It wasn't, not until last minute, not until very last minute.
Okay, so the teachers who are on the committees, who gave the language at a committee.
It didn't come before us until the last minute.
Maybe not, maybe not like you, but at the committees.
Well, I'm just saying, committees didn't, it didn't come before the board for a decision until the very last minute, until negotiations had already started. It didn't come before us.
So do you feel like that was an association or a committee issue?
I don't know who it was. I don't know. I just said, I just said the communication was off. And there's always been that headbutting left and right. So until we figure out that headbutting and maybe, like I said, maybe the change of association, maybe the change of presidency will help things. But until we figure out how to communicate as a group and a whole, we're always gonna have problems.
I think you and I really agree on like the communication part was, was really the problem. And whoever that came from, again, I'm not trying to like lay blame at anybody. But you know, like, I, to this day, still know teachers who still don't understand why the board is not, not at the table, right? They still don't understand that.
And I get that.
And, you know, like, that's, that's something that I know really weighs on a lot of teachers. And I know, like, when I go to negotiations, teachers are like, oh my God, thank you for being here, like, this means so much. You know, those kinds of things. And so the communication, whether it be like you didn't get the language right away, or someone forgot to give the language, or wherever that miscommunication fell down, I think that's, that's what has caused a lot of, like, like Will said, has caused, caused a lot of headbutting. And, you know, I think I remember Dr. Hill saying at negotiations, he was like, oh my gosh, why wasn't this talked about in committees? Because in years past, we had formed these individual language committees. And I still don't have that answer. I still don't have answers as to why those committees weren't formed. And I've heard both, you know, district negotiations team did not wanna host the language committees or the association didn't host the language committees, or it wasn't written here, it wasn't written there. It's a lot of miscommunication. Which is partly why I do feel like I, as a board member, if elected, would at least be in the audience. I feel like there's just a lot of information that happens there that can't necessarily always be relayed over the phone.
Yes and no, because the problem is if you're a board member, because I also thought I could just go sit in. But the problem is, once you attend as a board member, then you're that board member. You're, you're gonna be labeled as, you know, the attention's gonna be more on you than what's going on. Okay, so why was Will there, not the other three, not the other four? But everything that happens in the negotiations is gonna get back to you as a board. Because I, we did, we did talk about that.
Right. And I mean, I, I feel like that's, that's something to take on. I mean, I feel like and like we said earlier, communication is really important. So if I'm there as a board member in the audience, then that's just very well communicated to the other board in our audience, you know, like, I'm not here to make a decision, I'm not here to do that.
Just your interpretation though?
What do you mean?
If you are the only board member sitting there and listening to all of this and you get your feedback, you're still the only person that is doing the interpreting.
Right. But all the other, although other board members still get a phone call, whether or not they attend or not.
Well, you're, you're gonna get that though from the lady that's, that's representing the board, so your representation. And then also, like I said, it's also worked great for us the last two years where we've had raises and raises and everybody came to an understanding. It's the one time that something doesn't work in somebody's favor, then it's all dang it, the board's not there, what's going on with the board? So when everything has worked coming, for the past two years, we haven't heard a word, hey, why aren't you guys at the table? Nothing. You know, but then the one year that nothing happens, now everybody's upset, the board should be here and, and, you know, so.
I would, I would disagree with that though, Will, because I mean, even two, two, three, two years ago, maybe almost three years ago. I, I remember negotiations and I wasn't at that negotiations. And I remember having a lot of phone calls from teachers asking me why board members weren't there, so.
But it was, it was well known and a lot of people didn't know because we had talked to the MVA president at the time and told him that we weren't coming back. And so that was known. And even in their meetings, when they used to meet over at Main Street Bagels, we talked to the teachers in that meeting, let them know we're, we're not coming. This is why.
Okay.
You know, so it was just communication between, on the inside that knew, but that didn't get portrayed to everybody else.
Right. And, but I still think that teachers felt that they didn't feel heard or valued when you were not there. And I think that's, that's the intention, right? Even, even if I can't make a decision, like you were saying earlier, like, it is just my perception when I'm there in the board. But I'm not the only one there making a decision, you know, like, if anything, when after, you know, the negotiations have ceased for a moment and they go into caucus to call the other board members, I don't mind going back into the room with them and, and not saying anything. I, I can do that. And let's, you know, the lawyer, whoever the representation is, call all the other board members and allow them to have their understanding the way that they have their understanding. I feel being there gives me more information. It really did these last, this last session, like, I, I was able to hear a lot more information. And, and I, and I feel that because not only did I go to the negotiation sessions in person, I rewatched them. And on, of, with the video that was taken. And there is just, there was a lot, not, not like missed intentionally, but you know, camera can only go so fast. And the microphones only catch so much. And so there is just more, more information that was given to me just through atmosphere, just being there. And so I understand the perception and, you know, asking Um, and so I understand the perception and, you know, asking, well, why aren't the other board members there? And I, I understand that, but I, I feel like our, our teachers, um, at least the ones that, you know, I've talked to a lot, they really feel like it would be nice for board members to come back, um, at least in the audience. Maybe not at the table doing the negotiation, like you said, and having that whole kerfuffle with them, messed up language. But I do, I, I do hear from more teachers than not, that they really do wish board members were back.
A question for you, Casey. So where do you stand in this? Why are you there? Are you a representative of the union? What, what's?
When I've attended negotiations in the past, oh, I'm not a union member, I was there as community. I wanted to be there to get information.
So why did the teachers then, or why did the other people come to you directly?
Um, well, they trust me and they, um, they're just thankful that people are there. Um, they want people to be educated and, and it wasn't just me that they were going to, saying like, thank you for coming. I mean, there were other community members that showed up and they went up to them and said, thank you for coming. I wonder what you're thinking about all of this kinds of things. So it's not just me. And the reason I went was I, I just wanted the information. I'm one of those people that wants that firsthand information. I don't wanna read about it. I don't wanna read somebody else's perspective about it. I want my perspective um, to take on what's happening. And um, I didn't, I wasn't able to go back into the caucus rooms with the association or with the district. So I was just sitting there by my lonesome a lot of the times. Um, so I wasn't there in any like official capacity. I was there as, as a community member. Um, just so I could learn and see and understand um, what was going on. Um, because like I said, I just really wanted my own, my own understanding. It's, it's what I do for a lot of different things. I mean, even city council meetings, like I, I try to get my own information and my own understanding. Um, I went to a lot of the city council forums because I wanted to hear specifically what those candidates said, not read about, like a paraphrase in the, in the paper later. And it's why I watch a lot of your podcasts, because you give a lot of information and you show what people are saying. And so for me, that's, that was my purpose in being there. And that would be my purpose as a board member, to get all of the information um, available to me firsthand.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Because I know that Ruth's been looking at me for about 20 minutes now. Do you notice how long this is?
Sorry. We're both also chatty people.
And we're glad everybody's chatty.
Right, you can't learn things unless you hear. And that's what we're here for, is to get what people are actually saying.
Yeah, yeah.
So one last time, you have one minute. This is your one-minute thing. I've got my little timer on my watch. Just why should we elect you for school board and why should we continue to keep you on the school board? So, go.
Um, you know, I just, I bring a, I bring a different perspective. Um, I am a mom, I'm a parent, you know, and I'm a former educator and I also work in the business sector. It's not something we've seen um, on the board in, in a very long time. As someone who's a teacher and a parent and someone who has worked in the business sector, all three, um, in one person, right? Um, I, I honestly really would like to see a really good group of diverse thought on the school board, not just one way or another. Um, I value um, people who are not educators on their Board of Education, just so we have that additional perspective and parents. Um, but I feel like I just bring a different perspective to our board. Um, and I, I feel like I've done a lot of work to gain a lot of trust for teachers and administration. Um, I have clearly done my research. I like to go to board meetings and find out all of this information and make a really weighted decision on what's best for our schools and our students. Um, like I said, my slogan is educate, elevate, and empower, and I really mean that. I, any decision I make must educate our students, elevate our district, or empower our community members.
Okay, go.
All right, uh, so, so I've been on the school board for four years now and we've gotten a lot of things going. We got a lot of things started and we've, we've started going in the right direction, but we're not done yet. We still have some big projects to achieve and I, I have to see, like I said, I want to see our graduation work to 100%, or 90 to 100%. We're already 83.1 right now. So what a better way to finish up with, you know, at 100%, with 100% of our, our, our kids graduating. Um, I, I had, I think I am, I'm not a teacher per se, but I am, because I've been teaching kids that, teaching how to play football, teach kids in life, you know, for over 20 years now. And 15 years at a high school level where our kids are graduating to become young men. So we're teaching our kids how to prepare for life, because by becoming young men and young, young fathers, young business guys out in the world, um, those are lessons you learn every day. Um, so um, we, my, my goal in the next four years, if I liked it, is to, you know, keep our kids' schools safer, 100% safer. Um, figure out what our, our problems are in our schools and continue to do those and continue to address those. So I'm hoping to make my, my daughter's senior year in high school a good one for her, so.
Great. Well, you've been watching Mesa County Conference, extended view. This is the facts as we know them, the truth as we see it, you decide. Thank you, guys.
Thank you both.
Thank you, thank you, great questions.
Having this wedding with us.
Very good question.